Thank you all for coming to our first budget workshop. First order of business is to adopt our agenda.
When do we adopt the agenda?
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion in the second to adopt the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? No one? Okay. Select board remark is that this is very, very informal. This first budget meeting, these are not as strict or as formal as our regular meetings. You can tell that by Mr. Moore being right in there. That's okay. We want it to be as collaborative as it can be from everyone that's here that wants to give us advice and talk as we go through. The first meeting, we don't really run through a lot of numbers. We're going to be kind of taking a look at last year, how we really ended up, and then talk with two of our department heads. And we will, three of our department heads, three of our departments, so he was standing in front of me. And we will adjourn by nine P M. Sharp. Pardon? Or sooner. So that is a remark. So item three, budget workshop first is examination of twenty twenty five actuals, and you want to lead us through that?
Mr. Chair, I wondered since Chief Kachajin's on call tonight, I wondered if maybe the board might want to talk with the department heads ahead of that?
Yep.
And then go into the F Y twenty five.
Why don't we start with the chief, so that we, we hope that he doesn't get a call while you're there. So what I had asked each of, each of these individuals is to spend about three minutes on the prior year, three minutes on what's going on now, and three minutes of talking about what we want to plan for after next July first. So nine, nine minutes, we're not looking for a total, you know, long thing, but just a quick synopsis.
Okay, so for two thousand twenty four, we were actually budget wise, it was a difficult year for us. Staffing wise, we were fully staffed and we were at twenty four hour coverage, so we were doing fairly well then. When we rolled into two thousand twenty five, obviously with the budgetary issues that we had, we lost a majority of our police department. We went from seven officers down to just myself and Officer Kelleher right now. We've been actively trying to recruit new officers. We hired a part time officer, Michaela Cochrane, who's also planning, and we're in the process right now of testing her to go to the full time academy come February. And she, we actually, since we vetted her for the part time position, there's minimal that we have to do. The academy has a new written.
I just wanted to not correct you, but correct you.
Level two versus level three, right? Like, you know, we're stuck in part time, but.
Level two, yeah, it's terminology we've used for a long time. Level two used to be considered part time. A level two is part time certified, which means they can't do as much as a full time officer. As opposed to, let's say, when I, I'm a level three, so I can investigate anything from parking complaint all the way up to homicides, whereas a level two certified officer can't. So there's, their scope of practice isn't limited as to what they can do. But our hope is to get her through the academy when she passes the written test. She has to do a physical test, a run in a rowing machine, and other than that, we should be able to hopefully get her in there by February. I also have another candidate who lives in Crown Point, who I'm going to be sending him for the written test in October. That's the next time it's available, and our hope is we can get him on the path to going to the full time academy as well with Officer Cochrane. Other than that, we've unfortunately not had a lot of good viable candidates. The ones that we have, we've basically weeded them out fairly quickly, just for whether it's where they live geographically, criminal histories. A lot of people just have started the process, but then just, for lack of a better phrase, ghosted us and just not had any contact with us. So but we are still actively accepting applications. And we've also signed a contract with the company that is now doing a the written test for the police academy, and they're recommended to agencies by the police academy to vet any employees. Basically, they will do the background checks for us. Presently, I'm the only background investigator for the department, and I just don't have time to do it between, because I'm the only field training officer, I'm also training our new part time officer, taking calls for service, doing my administrative duties. So this company is going to be doing that for us, and it will save a lot of money and time as opposed to if we were to pay somebody overtime to do investigations and just taking people off the street to be able to do that, because a lot of it is after your regular shift that you'd have to do this. So that's going to save us a lot of time. Looking towards the future, for the next fiscal year, I am because we don't have full staff yet, it is my plan to try to reconstitute the department. I am looking at level funding us. I'm not looking at anything above and beyond. The only thing I wanted to try to tweak a little is to get some extra money for those backgrounds to be done, and I'd be just looking at three. They're approximately fifteen hundred dollars apiece. Other than that, for my budget, I'm not looking for anything else. We do need an additional officer position. We do need an additional car, but obviously that would increase the budget. But right now, I'm more concerned about getting our staff where it needs to be at a minimum, and that is my intent going forward. I'm not looking at any major increase in our budget.
Okay. Questions for the chief? I got, I mean, I just, because of what you're talking about, I'm just wondering the exactly what duties can't the level two officer do that level three can do?
So they can't, for the most part, investigate felonies. No matter what type of felony is, they can't do even a basic, trying to think of a good one for, like a burglary, for instance, if it's a felonious burglary, you can't investigate that. They can't investigate aggravated assaults. So anytime we have a level two officer that responds to those calls, if it's a life or death emergency, they can control the scene. If they had to, they could arrest the suspect. But then we would have to have a full time officer come in, either on overtime or for another one who's working the shift, and they actually have to do the paperwork for that, the affidavit. The level two officer can write a supplemental or supporting affidavit as to what he or she saw, but that officer can't can't investigate those. So it definitely restricts a lot of what they can do.
And over, like, say, the, the last year, what percentage of incidents in Brandon would you say were felonies as opposed to misdemeanors?
We definitely have, luckily, knock on wood, we have more misdemeanors than felonies, but some years, there's more, sometimes there's less. So it's really hard to, I, I couldn't, can't give you a number right now. I could go back and look in our records. I do know for since January first, we have, just bear with me one second. Man, don't get old and need reading glasses. Eight hundred and eighty three calls for service. That's including Officer Kelleher and I investigating and V S P handling after hours emergencies only, and that's sixteen hours a day.
Okay.
Seven days a week. Right now, Officer Kelleher is usually on call Monday through Thursday morning. After that, that's on his workdays, on my days off. I'm on call. Unfortunately, Officer Keller is sick tonight, so I'm on call as well, so.
Gotcha.
And then I had one, one second question, which is how many hours are we currently working our level two officer a week? I mean, she wants to work full time, and I know she can't do these felonies, but does, is she working more than twenty hours?
Right now, she's working, on average, twenty five hours per week, and that's because of some childcare issues. She hasn't signed on as a full time employee yet, so we're giving her that flexibility so she can make sure her children get to daycare in the morning, and then she can pick them up in the afternoon. But going forward, she is planning on making the arrangements where she is going to be able to basically pick up the full time position and also go to the academy full time. She'll have her without getting into her personal, you know, ability to, you know, arrange for childcare, what have you. That is going to be taken care of going forward, so I don't see any issue with that.
So I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure I understand, she would be continuing to work while going to the academy?
She can't work while she's, the academy won't allow that. So basically, she would be reassigned. Once she gets into the full time academy, she would basically be brought in as a full time employee. Her Monday through Friday job would be to go to the academy. Once she is out of the academy, then, because she's doing her field training right now, she already has a lot of the training that she would need to do post academy. She already has that under her belt, so basically, when she's out of the academy, she could just hit the ground running and go on onto the road.
Okay, that's what I thought. It was just when you said she could be able to work full time and go to the academy full time.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I missed.
It sounded like that was like.
The academy actually won't allow that. You have to, I know some departments, I believe, have done that, have the officers work on weekends, but that's frowned upon. It's usually they want the officer to concentrate on their education and their training at the academy, and once they're out, they can work their full time position.
That sounds like a recipe for.
How long is the academy?
Right now, it's seventeen, it's up to seventeen weeks.
They're, they're in the academy seventeen weeks?
Yes, Monday through Friday, and it's a live in academy. They're allowed to, they can either show up Sunday night to start the academy or sleep there and then start Monday morning. They can show up at the crack of dawn on Monday, work Monday through Friday, and then they leave in the afternoon around four or five. And they're given weekends off.
Yeah, I mean, the only, is it, is, is the level two officer want to work any more than twenty five hours now until the academy, or is that the, the number of hours she wants to work?
Right now, that's what she wants to work. Once she's done with field training, and I'm hoping that's going to be completed way before she goes to the full time academy, then we're gonna, again, without getting into her ability to arrange for childcare, what have you, her intent is to work as much as possible and or forty hours a week.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one. Thank you, chief. From your perspective, what do you, what do you perceive as the prevailing difficulty in recruiting new officers? Or I'm sure there's multiple factors there.
I mean, there are multiple factors. Everybody's hurting right now across the state, across the nation. Right now, I am, it is a little difficult to hire with the geographic restraint that I have as far as being able to hire people. I did have some really good very viable candidates that I could have brought in. But again, it's geographically, it just didn't work out. And there is a small candidate pool for, for police officers. People just don't want to do this job anymore. But like I said, occasionally, you'll get those good quality candidates like Officer Cochrane. We were lucky to get her. And she's ambitious, and she's looking forward to becoming a full time officer, but it's just a matter of getting those quality people. I personally don't like to settle for just anybody being put in the uniform. I'd rather have quality over quantity any day. And that's just for a myriad of reasons. It's for liability sake, for service to the community. You could just go down the list on that, but like I said, we're just slowly but surely trying to reconstitute and trying to get some good quality candidates in.
Thank you.
And still, the idea of a sign on bonus or whatever to attract a already certified officer doesn't, still doesn't make sense. I mean, I've seen signs down in Rutland in the fairgrounds that they're offering a sign on bonus for their people. I'm just wondering if that.
I have to be perfectly honest, I'm not really seeing anymore that that's, when the whole issue with police staffing in the United States started, sort of got to going south and general, not just in Vermont. A lot of departments were offering upwards of tens of thousands of dollars. At first, it was working, and now with us changing our, our pay scale to where it's probably one of the best in the county, I don't know if throwing money at it's going to make that much of a difference. And like I said, a lot of departments are just not really seeing a lot of success with it. Some are, some aren't, I guess, but I really haven't heard or seen much success with it in Vermont, at least. Maybe some other states it's working, but I just hate to see, and I'm all for making more money. I have no problem with that. I'm, I just don't know if throwing even more money at the problem is going to fix that right now.
Yeah, and it, to me, the only idea is to get a level three candidate, you know, that we don't have to send to the academy, because we're going to be sent, taking our part time personnel and sending them to the academy, so we're not going to have them for seventeen weeks. Yet we'll be paying them full time, and then we recruit this other one comes through. We got a second one in the academy for seventeen weeks with no guarantee that they're going to stay, you know, which is really tough.
Well, that's the other issue, too, with a lot of these bonuses that they give people. A lot of time will, a lot of people will just stay, and that's why if you see a lot of departments, they won't just cut that check to you and be like, here's ten thousand dollars. Those people will usually leave within that three years, once that money goes up, or if, if the department says, well, we'll give you a five thousand dollar sign on bonus, but you have to give us a two year commitment. We'll give you twenty five hundred now, twenty five hundred at the end of two years. From my experience, what I've seen, a lot of officers will leave and just go for more pay. So like I said, I'm not opposed to it, and if it's something that the select board and town management felt would be helpful, I'm all for that, to, to do anything we can to bolster our numbers, but like I said, I don't necessarily know if that's going to necessarily bring people in. So if we could do it on an experimental basis and see if it does, give it a six month or year trial run if it does.
Well, yeah, who knows? I mean, I just wonder on it. We've, we've been ten months that we've been really looking and really having dead ends, so it's just trying to, continuing the same thing? Or is there something else we can try? That's all. Just trying to pick your brain.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Okay. Uh, anyhow.
One of my big concerns was the overtime budget from last year, three hundred and sixty percent. That just seemed to be, doesn't apply now, but that's really, it really bugs me that it got to such a big number and nothing was done.
As far as.
There's three hundred and sixty percent over budget on your overtime for last year.
And a lot of that was because we did go twenty four hours, but we were on the same path with having to pay on call and call out. Even right now, we're pay officer at Kelleher when he's, I, I obviously, I'm salaried, so I don't get paid for being on call, but even now, he's making much more than usual because he's on call. He's getting call outs every time we get a call out. He paid two hours for that, so it adds up quickly. It really does. And law enforcement is not cheap. It's, go across the United States, it is not a cheap thing to have public safety, whether it's police, fire, rescue is not inexpensive thing to have in any community, whether it's Brandon or Los Angeles or anywhere in between. And I, I think this year, even right now, we're, I believe, only a ten percent of our budget. Obviously, we don't have the staff to, to be spending that money, but even if we do go forward with, let's say, we fill our full op, our four officer positions, plus myself in our administrative assistant, we're still even being on call, we're still looking at probably thirty two hours a week that we're not going to have coverage, that we're going to have to pay people overtime to cover.
I don't think you'll be anywhere, I don't think it'll be anywhere near.
Oh, no, I hope it's not either. Absolutely. I agree with you on that.
I guess it's not part of our budget process, but is the coverage we're getting at night from the state police working out to your satisfaction?
Yep, they've, they've actually been fantastic, and we owe them a debt of gratitude. They are only, obviously, all the calls get screened through either me or Officer Kelleher. If it's a life or death or an immediate public safety emergency, a serious car accident, if it's a a domestic in progress, anything, the troopers will go to that. Quality of life issues, what's happening now is we're screening those out. We're stacking those, and we take them either the next day, like, let's say we get five calls tonight, and it's something that doesn't need an immediate response. We put those in a call stack in our computer, have our dispatcher, and when we come into the office in the morning, we just have five or six calls waiting for us. If it's over the weekend, it could be anywhere from three or four up to, I think, last week, we had twelve waiting for us when we came in, so. But no, they've, they have been nothing but cooperative. They've been extremely helpful. They've gone to a lot of calls, dealt with a lot of serious calls, most of them domestics, disturbance calls, but again, their resources are stretched thin also. So any quality of life issues, if we get complaints about speeders, I've been getting a lot of complaints for people at night about noise disturbances and speeders, and I just have to tell people, the state police will not address those, and we don't have the resources to deal with those right now, so.
The people who call gets stacked, how are they, when you go finally see them on Monday morning or something, are they receptive? Are they angry? Are they?
I haven't had any to be angry yet. Luckily, and I, I think a lot of people do understand the situation we're in. And the dispatcher always tells the people that we don't have anybody on right now. This is in an emergency call. A Brandon officer will be in touch with you if it's tomorrow morning or over the weekend. And like I said, most of the stuff, if not all of it, that we have stacked, it's not life or death stuff. It's quality of life or stuff that's not going to require an immediate police emergency. Let's say harassing phone calls or something to that nature, where we don't have to send an officer out, and even if it, we had an officer on shift, it's not like we'd have to go blue lights and sirens to this call to deal with it. So I would say most people in the community have been understanding and supportive and receptive, and, and they understand the situation we're in right now, so we do appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Do you ready, leave?
Again, knock on wood.
Okay, so our second department was going to be Jeremy?
Yeah. So twenty twenty four, everything was good. We did some paving on Pearl Street, no, Uni Street, North Street. We were fully staffed. We had one guy leave, O'Shaughn retired, obviously. And then another one of our guys left, and we replaced him, so twenty five was good. Fully staffed. One of the other guys left, but now we're back to full staff again, getting stuff done, in a timely manner, and we paved Town Farm Road this year, just patch paving on Carver Street, a bunch of ditching on Country Club, Town, uh, Birch Hill. And we're going to try to do some more over on Long Swamp. And get ready for winter, obviously. And then in the future for twenty six, we'd like to see getting a new tandem, replace truck four, the Mac we have now, two thousand fifteen. And look at going forward with a new building. And Wheeler Road, paving Wheeler Road. Instead of, we're fully staffed, and everybody's doing well, so we should be in good shape, I think. We might have to call in a backup throughout the winter if we get a lot of snow for one of the smaller trucks. But other than that, we're doing good.
Okay. Question for Jeremy. You beat his nine minutes. Go ahead.
I know this is the first time we've done the, the contract out with Goshen to help them out with some of their work. From your view, how has that been working out? Versa, perfect, I think. Great. I can grade it give or take a little bit, eighteen hours. All the roads up there, and the mowing I did, I think it was twenty hours, something like that, with all the roadside. So it's working out good, I think, and I think they're happy and with the quality of the roads and everything else, so. But it sounds anyways from all the feedback that I'm getting. And I do have to do it one more time this year. Probably either the end of October or beginning of November. It's going to be all set for the winter.
And apart from looking at a new tandem, all the other equipment vehicles?
Everything else is really good shape. So we replaced truck three with the international we bought last year, so that's new. Truck seven is three years old, and then the two five fifties are in good shape, so. The grader and loader, we bought the mower, obviously, tractor and mower. That should last us quite a while.
Great.
So.
Board members, I'm going to introduce to you later on tonight some capital stuff, and Jeremy and I talked today about, he had a thought about maybe the backhoe not being the most suitable piece of equipment that we have, and he's had a thought about maybe selling the backhoe and the excavator that we bought used and getting a newer excavator. I don't know if you want to talk about the whys of that, or.
We don't.
Recently buy that excavator?
The excavator, yes, and the backhoe was back four years ago.
Twenty twenty one.
Yeah.
That's new.
Yep, four years ago. Since we've gotten the excavator, obviously, the backhoe was for the ditching. It takes so much longer, more time to do it. Every four feet, you got to move, set the dam riggers, and then go back from there. The excavator, obviously, you can go just right down through it. We haven't used the backhoe, besides for beaver dams, all summer, haven't touched it. In my eyes, I think we possibly get rid of it, and the excavator, and upgrade the excavator from a nineteen ninety nine to maybe a two thousand twenty two, say, or something like that. We use the excavator a lot. We've done more dishing this year and last year with the excavator than we did the first two years I was here with the backhoe, because it's so much slower.
So you think we sold?
Consolidate.
Sold the backhoe, sold the excavator we now have. Um, from that, do you anticipate we'd get I, sufficient to purchase a new excavator, or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes. The idea that we're throwing out there is we have that piece of equipment sitting there, we paid however much for it. That's not getting used. It's sitting there.
You know, as soon as we sell it, all the beavers in the state are.
Right, right.
But I, we heard they don't have a way to get rid of our dams.
Yeah, exactly. You taking off your snow tires to work?
Do you have any concerns about only having one bucket loader in the winter, if we sell that back?
That's what I said to Seth today. I did mention that. Hopefully, we never have that problem, but if we did, we could load with the excavator if we had to, until we got the thing fixed. As far as, it shouldn't be down that long, I would think. Pull the excavator out, we can load with that. I, I was just thinking, like I said, that's sitting there, we're not using it. It's not helping it by just sitting there either.
And I think Jeremy also mentioned to me that the excavator, to your point, you know, which we did buy only fairly recently, they've put a tremendous amount of hours on it. They've found it more more utilitarian, I think, than, than the backhoe.
Go through my pictures on my phone and look at the thing now, but I think we've put like twenty five hundred hours on it, and two and a half years we've had it.
Wow.
We use it a lot.
And what year is the one we have?
Ninety nine.
Ninety nine.
Yep. Again, fourteen hundred hours on it. We bought it from Donny Scarborough. Which it's in beautiful shape. I think we can get something for it. Obviously, we get something for the backhoe, because there's nothing wrong with the backhoe. It's three years old, four years old. It would be it, the new excavator had A C and everything else. We sat in the excavator this summer. That's not a big deal, but it was a hundred degrees outside. It was a hundred and fifty inside that excavator, but we did it, obviously. Because there's no way to see it, and it's not new enough to have the A C unit and everything else.
I certainly don't know how we, we do equipment like that. Would we be better off trying to sell those two pieces ourselves, or trading them to a dealer where we're buying the other?
We'd have to get a hold of CAT, say, or G Stones, or somebody to see what they'd give us for each piece.
We've been pretty successful with municipal, haven't we, in terms of?
Yeah, that worked out pretty decent for the trucks. As far as the Mac, like I was telling Seth and Bill today, say we go with Trailer Boys, Willa Western Star, we should have them give us a price on trade in on the Mac, and see what it is, and see if we think it's fair. If not, sell it outright.
And that's for next year, after July one, or is that before that?
That is the budget we're about to write, yes.
The one we're writing.
F Y twenty seven action, yep. He's, Jeremy has said that the Mac will have no problem getting through the winter.
No, absolutely. Just before it starts breaking down more frequently, we're putting a bunch of money into it. It's probably time to get rid of it. Obviously, all we're allowing is sea salt. So and we oil them, and we just fully filmed all the trucks actually last week. So pressure washed them all and fully filled them in.
Made them all pretty.
Yeah, they didn't get set, so hopefully some dust and stuff will stick to them and keep some of the salt off them. We have plenty of dust, so. Plenty of it.
Well, it certainly makes sense for us to have decent equipment. With the, you know, the size of the crew we have, we want them out working and not having to have all this stuff broken down, so.
Downtime in the middle of the night for plowing or whatever. So, but yeah, but we should be in good shape as far as for this winter.
Yeah, and I'd like to, you know, thank you for staying as tight to the budget as you did a year ago. That was very good.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. For sure.
Yep, all right, we had a question in the back of the room. Trish.
I'm not really sure.
I would note that in the grand scheme of things, it's a difference of two hundred and fifty six dollars, so. Yeah. Yeah.
Was it when I took, I might, we went to the hamster, we get the. Was it when I took, I might, we went to New Hampshire to get the.
I think it was when we went to Fairfield's.
New Hampshire to get the new truck. To replace the other one. I drove my pickup because it's a ways over there. So it might have been pretty embarrassing for that. Yeah.
Yeah, I know. It's like you go down and it's like ninety four, ninety four, and it's like, whoa, two hundred and twenty eight. But then I looked over, I'm like, oh.
It might have been, I put my first one over to New Hampshire. Those key trips when we went, me and Seth went and looked at it, then I took.
And I do know.
Next time they'll take the bus.
Pardon?
Take the bus.
We'll take the bus.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we saved a lot of money buying that down there too. That was a huge savings.
It was ready, you know, and, and this winter, we're not in that kind of urgency position or, or this budget writing season, we're not in that urgency position where we're worried about this coming winter with the equipment we have.
And I did call over there again to get a price on. Pretty much the same deal, but a, uh, tandem. Cause they come, whatever, ready to go where. They have some trucks set up over there already. I am happy with. The body and stuff on that truck. It's really no different than the Viking, um. And it seemed to work really good last year, so. We'll see.
They were super easy to deal with.
Yes, they were very, it was like a handshake and. I took the truck without even. Talking to anybody pretty much. We went and got it, looked at it.
They build the town like net thirty after we've had it.
They're very good over there. For sure.
Any additional questions? We're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
And now Mr. Moore.
Hello. Um, so I have a couple of departments to report on. Is that a WASP? Sorry.
Looks like a bubble bit.
There were a really big fly.
Fly. Uh, anyways.
It's a murder hornet.
Oh, great. Perfect. Um, so I'm, I'm here to report, uh, first on recreation. Um, last year was a different year for us, uh. Midway through the year, we lost a longtime employee. We hired a new employee. Um, there's been a shift in the way that we're administering program and division of labor as far as my hours with rec. Our new employee, Robin, is handling more of the logistical things with regard to administering youth sports. Um, which has freed up my time considerably. Um, we also worked to kind of wait out, uh. Uh, our former employee Colleen has a business, uh, that provides recreational opportunities within the town of Brandon and. We wanted to sugar out who got what as far as the, uh, and the divorce of events. Um, and we've settled it out and we have an amicable working relationship. Um, it's provided an opportunity now for us going forward. To look to supplement, uh, the events that she's providing with our own events. Um, we still go forward with our. Our plan to have at least one critical event a month administered by the town in addition to the other things that we do. Going forward as far as recreational expenses, um, the biggest change or the greatest change, I know the select board's certainly aware of it. Um, you know, the splitting out of buildings and grounds from us being an own department to becoming. From recreation to parks and recreation. So the department. Expenses. This year and selling this budget for twenty seven is going to be different because we're going to have. All of the parks that are part of recreation that will be under Parks and Recreation. Um. You know, with that, that provides an opportunity, uh, looking to the future for us to look at, uh. Really buckling down on capital improvements, the first of which obviously is the long planned and finally happening. Uh, Jeremy spoke. Left. Jeremy spoke with Fred and Fred will be, uh, from Vermont Roadworks who got the bid to do the multi-use court at Esterbrook. That'll be happening. Um, but there's more opportunities to improve our parks, uh, the. Uh, the playground equipment at Seminary Hill has, is approaching twenty years old. Um, so. There's an opportunity potentially replace that or augment that. Um, little upgrades here and there, but I mean, really. Building, you know, there was some deferred maintenance that happened at Esterbrook and, uh. We don't want to see that kind of thing happen with some of our, uh, with the rest of our parks. And so having parks under Parks and Rec provides that opportunity to really. Fundraise, grant right, um. Capital plan for making sure those things don't fall into disrepair. So we have to do full replacements. Um. For example, um, again, when we talked about the matches and where the money was going to come from for the, uh. Forty seven thousand ish dollar, uh, repaving of. The tennis court or what was formerly tennis court at Esterbrook to build a new court in of that size is a. A quarter of a million dollars to a half a million dollars. So this is a good investment, again, a good investment of our money to. Take that, reasphalt that. And so those examples, again, we do, I think. As a town, you know, with the leadership of, uh, the select board, but, um. We do a good job of using duct tape and zip ties to put together solutions that are Brandon sized and. Brandon acceptable. Um, as far as community development goes, um. Our biggest thing is, which has been our focus for the last two or three years is housing. You know, without housing, we don't have. The ability to have workers to work in the jobs that we have here. Um, we do have a couple of empty storefronts now that. We'll be filling a couple of buildings that are for sale in the downtown. Um. But we have the tools that other towns don't have with the guard, do our revolving loan fund, a quarter time to twenty percent time, uh. Economic Development Officer to help move. Product, projects along and not to toot my own horn. I've gotten some shout outs from various developers. Within the, within Rutland County and the state, uh. With the way that we meet their challenges and that Brandon is like, uh. With your leadership, planning commission's leadership, uh, we've done, I think, some great work to make Brandon a. Good place to invest in. I think our housing starts, our construction, our permits show that, uh, that those efforts have paid off. With that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. I cannot promise that I'll have them all for you here tonight, but I can certainly go back and. Give them to you.
I have a question, um. From the budget report. There are a number of line items. That have a budget amount of zero. And then an actual amount that. Ranges from insignificant to fairly significant. And I was just wondering.
Sure. So, uh, can you grab one that you'd like to look at?
So, um. And also like football clinic, and then it says do not use. I'm not sure what that means. Um, and it has budget of zero and actual of. Sixteen hundred sixty seven dollars.
With the varieties, we are, uh, looking to clean up, uh. Back when I started in two thousand twelve, uh, we used our general ledger to kind of track everything. Um, now we have a software that, so when we get a registration for baseball, for instance, it goes directly to baseball. We can track it on that side versus using the general ledger to track baseball. When we report this to the town, we report this as recreational programming versus recreational expenses. Also in my budget now, again, are some lines that are for departments that were not housed in recreation, but are housed, housed in building grounds.
Okay, so like movies expense, budget zero, actual forty three hundred fifty dollars.
Yeah, that's something that was, uh, I think expense to movie expenses that should not have been expensed to movie expenses. That was, uh, we back in, let's see, fall of twenty four, we had movie, we rented, uh, the projector and did a drive-in movie. I would imagine that that's where the most of that revenue line comes from, but realistically.
I think, uh, if I could interject, sorry. So I feel like you were asking on the expense side.
Yeah.
Some zero lines with a four thousand dollar expense.
Right.
But there is also a revenue line, which was movies, zero budget, four thousand dollar revenue. So I think that.
Is that the same for maybe all the others?
A number of the others. Yep. Like I, I think that what we find sometimes is that. We're not sure a program's going to happen, so there's nothing put in but a, just a line as being a placeholder. And then if Bill makes something happen, then there's revenue to come in for movies, you know, that was four thousand one thirty six, ten. And then that expense line for movies, I've lost the page.
Four thousand three hundred and fifty.
Yeah, right.
And would that also explains why it says it's one hundred percent of budget instead of four thousand three hundred and fifty percent of budget?
I, I think that the one hundred percent feature is, um, one of the parameters that Nemrick uses for zero lines, zero budget lines. You know what I mean?
Okay.
And, uh, you know, for us on the revenue line, we're, uh. Consolidating everything down into. Let's say there's going to be four different revenue lines for us going forward, at least within, you know, uh, with our cash receipts for program expenses, facilities, rentals. Donations and the fourth one, I can't remember off the top of my head, but sponsorships. So we can easily track those versus making sure they're all being assigned to the. To the program and, and general ledger, because we have the ability to report out with X. Using Excel and using our internal software with the rec programming. What we got in for revenues from people paying with credit cards online versus. When, uh, Phoenix Feeds writes a check for a thousand dollars to sponsor team or four hundred fifty dollars to sponsor team. And we wanted to be able to track those all separately versus having them be. Potentially misassigned.
I only have. And like two questions and I, I know, I know when yours, things get lumped together so much. That. It gets really hard to, to see, but, um. Let me just finish this one note here. Adult. Um, my, my concern is always in adult stuff. And bus trips that those should not cost taxpayers anything. So I'm going to ask that again. Like for last year, bus trips. For, uh, expenses were seventeen nine. Oh. Yeah, seventeen nine and revenue for bus trips was thirteen seven. So. Um, four thousand dollar. Shortfall, so to speak, on a bus trip. Bus trips. And. Are we, are we? Or have we lost money like in prior years on bus trips? And are we addressing that now so that we don't?
We, we have rarely lost money on bus trips. This, I believe, if we're to go back to fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. That was the year we did trips, bus trips to Salem and we were selling. We're selling. Bus tickets back in May. And so that revenue got clocked in twenty three, twenty four versus coming over to twenty four, twenty five. So that money was accepted in twenty three, twenty four, but didn't transfer over to twenty four, twenty five. So we started selling tickets and we sold, there was three buses that went to Salem in October of twenty four. But revenue that was collected in May, June of twenty. Four. But wouldn't it be in fiscal year twenty four, twenty five? And the expense was paid in twenty five when we actually take the buses at that point.
And the same kind of things for adult activities. An adult activity line. Said that the revenue was only thirty nine hundred and the expenses were eleven, seven. So again, I'm.
We're not losing money on our adult activity.
I'm, I'm of the mindset that we shouldn't be losing.
And we're not.
Adults should be a. Um, we should be making, making money on adults to. Offer the services for them and, uh.
Yes.
Be able to put it towards needy kids that. Or needy families that can't do something on the other end. So I, I know there's been a lot of accounting shifts, but. I guess we'll see.
And, and you know, for, for fiscal year. Twenty six, twenty seven or. Yeah, twenty six, twenty seven, we're doing far fewer bus trips. I mean, that was something that was the bailiwick of. Conley Wright that got peeled out of our budget at this point. Um, we still do our Celtics bus trip. Um, and that's really about all we have planned for bus trips is our once a year Celtics bus trip.
Question, yes, Trish.
The plan had been to, like, I don't think we were billed out for some of our marketing. Well, we, we. Participate in a regional marketing initiative. I don't think we were billed out for that from the chambered economic, uh, develop, uh, chamber and economic development of the Rutland region. Um, but I haven't expended that money in quite a bit. It's something that we could potentially cut down on because these last couple of years, we haven't been using that money as much.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore while he's up?
I, I got one. Um, we've been talking about other communities going to, to pay for. Quite some time now. Can we? Can we come up with a plan and either put it to bed or?
So when this has come up with other select boards. I really think that it has to be something that is either proposed by the select board to those other select boards or proposed by a community member from that community. I, 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 I just. I, I mean, I guess, you know, I, I work at your behest. If you guys were to say at a select board meeting, we want you select or, uh, we want you, uh. Recreation Director Moore to go to these other towns and demand money for them or ask them to get on their appropriation. It has to be something, I, again, I think that a community member that lives in that town asked to put that on their. Put that on their ballot or ask to kick in money or a select board to say. Hey, guys, listen, you, you know, we've got ten members that are coming from Goshen all the time. They're paying an extra nine dollars. If you don't want to pay an extra nine dollars, could you maybe. You know, kick us five hundred dollars a year to offset that or something like that.
So we are already charging individuals.
Yes, we, we charge, so we charge non-residential fees to anybody that comes from Brandon, uh, that's not, doesn't have a Brandon address. They range in nine dollars to nineteen or twenty dollars, depending on the. Size of the pro, of the activity, you know, something like baseball, it's forty five versus fifty four dollars, it's nine dollars. Something like dance where it's a hundred and eighty five dollars, it's another nineteen dollars somewhere in there. So we are charging them for that. But as far as that extra, hey, do you guys want to kick in to be a part of this or have your people? I actually had a, a community member from Pittsburgh ask me about that with regard to dance. And I said. You should talk to your select board about the possibility of having them pay for that. Um. Salisbury will. Kick money in to, so we have a swim instructor from Salisbury and their select board kicks in money to help. I think pays those people back for coming to, uh, do swimming lessons at Brandon. But we're again, we're still charging that extra nine dollars or people from out of town.
Speaking of swimming lessons.
I can't hear the questions.
Yeah.
Speaking of, yeah, speaking of swimming lessons, um. The Nifty Fifty and Foley Brothers, was that this past summer that they chipped in for or next?
This, it was this past summer. It was a really generous offer. So Nifty Thrifty decided that they would pay for half of the. Forty dollar cost for swimming lessons for folks, which then in turn encouraged Foley Brothers to kick in the other half. So swimming lessons were free. For folks from Brandon, um, fully paid, uh. Nifty Thirties already gave us our check. Foley Brothers cutting us a check for half of. The total amount for swimming lessons, um, which again was generous and fantastic and. Encourage those kinds of donations and Nifty Thirties reached out again about the possibility to do something else as well as other, uh. Other organizations in town are considering that as a model. Um, one thing that I've talked to some of these other organizations about is. Not making it entirely free because we did run to swimming lessons where people registered for some of them and they didn't show up because there was no sort of personal.
Investment.
Investment. So even if it's five dollars or ten dollars, they feel like they contributed something. There's more of a chance to show up. We did have some no shows, which then meant there was a family that couldn't show up, but. So.
The difference in a fee, fee structure. For all activities, the same nine dollars difference from a town or is it?
I mean, mo- most.
Depend on the activities.
It depends, depends on activity, but I mean, most of them are nine dollars. Like we, what nine dollars I think is our base, our bare bones minimum. So something that's twenty five or thirty five or forty five or fifty five dollars. Which is about where a lot of our youth programming is, it's nine dollars. We start getting to larger pro, um. More expensive programs like archery, that's eighty dollars. It's more expensive. And then again, when you talk about dance, which is a six month program, once or twice a week, depending on, that's more money. It's, it's a percentage, but nine dollars is the base minimum. And I can again, can create reports with our recreational software that shows exactly what people have paid from out of town. I ran the opposite report actually for people from Nifty Thrifty so they could see what each one of our programs were charging, how many branded participants were in each one of the programs. And this year again, we're seeing, you know, I think. Maybe COVID's over or at least to settle down because our numbers are way up for a lot of our sports this fall. because our numbers are way up for a lot of our sports this fall.
I think an interesting number to look at is, you know, we've always tried to make rec programs and rec revenue be close to a wash. And so then what the town taxpayers are paying would be the salaries and benefits for yourself and your assistant. And so the one thing that I've heard people say is, well, you know, Brandon's paying all of that, even though Sudbury Kids are going, it would be interesting if you could give us a big spreadsheet that would show us maybe roughly what we got in extra revenue from other towns' kids coming to our programs. It'd be nice to know, you know, are they contributing a fair amount towards, you know, our hard expense, which is, you know, if you and Robin and, and you know, your, your benefits and whatever. So that'd be kind of interesting. I don't know if you could do that without it being really hard.
It wouldn't be too heavy of a lift at all.
Other question? Did someone say there was one up there or not?
No, we're not.
It's just that they couldn't hear the question and
All right. I think you're off the hot seat.
Thanks, Bill.
Never off the hot seat.
All right. Do you want to add anything to the, to the prior year's review?
As far as the department, the administration and finance department, I don't have anything in the forecast for heavy use as far as changes to staff or anything like that. I do have something related to this Thursday's meeting about the reporter and the future of the reporter and the need for the town to kind of up its game in the technology world so that we're sending agendas, minutes, all that kind of stuff, basically to not be reliant on the community newspaper capturing all that stuff and getting it out there in a broadcast way. And Bill and I have met with three different vendors and I think we've got a great partnership about to hatch here and it's going to be reasonable money that can be contained in the budget that we have already for that department. So that's, that's a change and I would expect that that change will happen around the time of town meeting would be my guess because it's going to take some time to build the structure. Other than that, in the overall budget, would you like me to look at the overall budget with you? I, I do want to point out, and this is not tooting my horn or yours or anything. We did end up at about a three percent surplus, a little bit more than a three percent surplus. And that is entirely not a function of short staffing in the police department because we did expend a hundred percent of the police department money by buying the cruiser out of the police department. So this has nothing to do with police short staffing. And I will tell you that the department heads and the staff who, you know, source some of the stuff we buy, they are as careful with this, with the town's money as they are, as you are with your own money at home. They are all right. They're as careful with their money as Ralph is as careful with his money.
Okay, just want to make that clear.
They, they really are, I think you should be gratified at the fact that we have employees who are recent hires and we have employees who have been with the town for many decades and they all still care about what they're spending. And so there's, this budget coming in under the projected spending is not entirely a function of the fact that I'm cheap or telling the department heads no over and over again. They don't come to look for approval for stuff that's questionable hardly ever, you know? And they're constantly coming up with good ideas for efficiencies. Our, our new assistant operator at the wastewater department, I know we're not talking about the wastewater budget tonight, but this is kind of an emblematic example that's on my mind because it happened just within the last week. Came up with a much more cost efficient way for us to do a task that has to be done, which is mucking out those large oval oxidation ditches down at the wastewater plant. You know, we're going to rent for two days, a very small piece of equipment that will get in there. We can lower it down in there and it's a piece of power equipment and it's going to muck out that oxidation, oxidation ditch rather than sending two of our staff people in there for two days with shovels. So it's, it's a huge labor savings. It's certainly better for their health and safety not to have them doing this by hand. And I, I think this just is a good example. So the budget overall, I think as I, I feel like at this point with the board, you get like a summary of each of the departments with each two week report. When we have a select board meeting, you get that roll up page. So hopefully nothing is really a surprise. Like you've had kind of a steady, constant check in every two weeks when you have a select board meeting at the department level. And whenever anybody asks for the full detail, the line by line detail, it's very easy to produce that. So hopefully this production of the end of the year, line by line detail is not really raising new issues in your mind. But if there are any new issues that you are surprised to see, we can certainly address them now. But every department came in under its projected spending, except for the departments where they had an offsetting revenue line, such as highway, where Sue credits, you know, some inter account transfers up on the revenue side and we put all the paving in the operating budget. Or except where Bill has a program that we weren't sure was going to run and he runs it and he has the expense and he has the offsetting revenue, those kinds of things. So I feel like it's stable and we're in a good, in a good position. And I appreciate the board's support and I know that as we bring the bills to you every two weeks, I know that you look through the warrants. I get sometimes I'll get a question before a meeting, sometimes I'll get a question in a meeting, but I don't think there's been a two week warrant to pay in the whole time I've been town manager, that one of the five of you didn't come to me and just ask a question. And these are simple questions and they're not accusatory and I appreciate that. And there's generally a very good answer to them. So that's my overall situation report.
Okay. Anyone have anything else in there for item three or do we move on to item four?
I do have something else. If you, do you want to talk about capital stuff now before we get to the, or do you want to come back to it?
No, we can talk about it now.
I, okay, I am like crying on the inside that Jan Coolidge is not here today.
Well, we can wait till the next meeting.
Because you can say, look, Jan.
Look, Jan, a plan. So I, I do, I want to give Jan credit, you know, she has been persistent and tenacious about this. When I was on the select board, we requested a capital plan of the town professional staff and it wasn't forthcoming for lots of reasons, you know, whatever. And I will say it's very intimidating to start one of these from scratch, which is what we did. I had a lot of help from Jackie in establishing what we have for inventory, for equipment and all that kind of stuff. Had a lot of help from all the department heads. So I do have a plan, a draft. I really want to emphasize this is a draft and it's open to all kinds of questions and debate. Two, three, four, five, six. But it's someplace to start from and I do, I do think that it's really important that the select board understand that the capital plan should not be one man's idea of what should happen with big money items, right? This should be
Are there changes in this from?
There are some changes, but you have the thick version. There should be one. There should be one version where it's all one sided and that one belongs
Oh, the dead version.
Yeah.
Yep. So now do you, you want to go through this or you want everyone to read it and be ready for the next meeting for this?
I think what I'd like to do is just introduce it briefly and if anybody's got a question right off the top, we can get those. So there's a difference between a program and a plan. The program's basically the guidelines, that's what it starts off. The pages two, three and four have letters A, B, C, D. Those talk about the four main sources that the town has for capital expenses or for capital investments and they're summarized at the bottom of page four. The top of page five has today's balances in all of those areas. Then there's a little discussion of borrowing and then starting on page seven is the actual five year capital plan by the four missions that we've divided the town staff. So administration and finance is one page. It's principally the town office. Public safety is one page, which is principally the police department. Public works is two pages, which is the highway department. This is not, this plan does not include the wastewater department. Uh, that's a separate fund. And page 12 is one page of the community development mission, which is the recreation and economic development. The orange piece at the bottom of that page is a really, really broad estimate of what a new highway barn might cost to finance. That's not saying that the amount financed is what it will actually cost to build it. I, I threw out $750,000 and I threw out $1 million and I don't know whether we're going to land in between those things or outside those things. We're too early. And then the last page is a summary. And I will tell you, this is not a balanced plan at this point, right? We are predicting something on the order of $700,000 of capital spending every year against something on the order of $600,000 worth of capital revenues every year. And you can see the deficit there. It's a place to start from and the board's, the board's role, right, is going to be to make priorities and to decide, okay, are the investments all important enough that they warrant some new revenue sources? Or are the revenue sources sufficient for the capacity of the taxpayers? And are we going to limit or curtail or put off some of the investments? And you may have other investments that we have not thought of, but this was formed in conjunction with each of those department heads. And we tried to be as detailed, but also, you know, this is not, this is not at the level of, you know, the tools and the toilet paper line in the highway garage kind of thing. This is big stuff that we can't pay for in one year.
Put a lot of work into that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was a good time, I will say. I'm glad Jan stuck with it and it was a good exercise. And I think it helped me understand our big investments better. And I hope it helps you understand our big investments better and then you'll be able to make, you know, great decisions.
So the segment six bond is being paid off in December?
This is the main, yes, this is the main big change in the town's financial condition for the year that we're doing the budget workshop for. There'll be one payment in December of 2026, which is the FY27 year for $138,000 and that will pay off the initial bond for segment six. And so that's basically what I would consider to be the hold harmless capacity for the taxpayers, right? If there's another capital investment needed that can be kept within that $138,000 going forward, there won't be a tax impact.
That's what Seth and I have been talking about for two years, I think, trying to, knowing that we have this highway garage problem that the trucks are too big to go in it, the building is crumbling and whatever, that we need something different. The timing, that's, that's the time where we could do it, where we would not create an increase on people's tax bill and possibly even still a decrease because the bond should be smaller than the segment six bond, so the payment should be smaller.
Yeah. The segment six bond, I know we've asked this question over and over and not had a firm answer. The firm answer is we borrowed 1.77 million dollars. And we are not going to be borrowing 1.77 million dollars to build a new highway barn. So yes, interest rates now are not as attractive as they were when we financed the segment six bond.
By the time we're ready to do it, they could be back in line again.
Right, they're meeting again this week even. And there is a little quote in there somewhere about this. You know, the, the town will be able to borrow at a cost less than the general market will borrow at. So if your mortgage is six or something percent right now, or if that's what you're seeing for mortgage rates, the town will be borrowing at probably more like four and a half was the most recent issue from the bond bank.
Okay. I think that's a great plan. I think we need to read through it all, be, you know, keep bringing it to our meetings and
Bill did have good news about the highway barn, just on his own. Do you want to share that with the board?
I think my microphone works. Oh, yeah. So the, uh, we spoke briefly with, uh, I spoke briefly with the wetlands manager for our area, Zapatik courage and just asked if there was a possibility of us to be able to build on the land that we're currently on because we just thought it was a nonstarter with the wetlands being as close as they are. And she was like, I think there's something you could do here, certainly. So we're going to have to invest in an engineer to do wetlands delineation for us because that's what you need to do when you're this close to the wetlands. But I think there may be some room for us to build where our existing garages and
It is positive.
And also, because we, Bill loves language, I love language. We found out that the actual wetland name for the kind of soil and hydraulic conditions up there is called Linwood Muck. So I am now calling the highway department Linwood Muck and I think it's great.
Yeah.
Swol. Yes. It's a very particular kind of smell though.
So if we were to
We can get a plaque on the new garage.
I think we should name it.
If, if we were thinking of using a Linwood Muck site, we would tear down that building and build a brand new building or build it adjacent to that or?
So if you think about the way that lot is, to the west is the wetland and there's like, she described it as fingers of wetland that kind of come into what looks like the dry spots that we work. So you'd want to be on the east side, which is the driveway side of the salt shed. Like we really cannot get where the salt shed is even or go past it. So could the building be kept, the building that we have now, could it be kept for some purpose? If you built a new garage, kind of where they park the trucks?
Yeah.
Potentially, you know, there might be just enough room to have them both there and still be able to turn a truck that way. If you decide that the, you know, the highway barn that we have now can be used for something.
Well, I think the smaller trucks still fit in there and
Yeah, and some of the equipment excavators.
In there, but not, not the few big tandem trucks with wings.
Yeah. And the, the, the key thing about the highway barn, I think that we have now that maybe people know or don't know is it's really, really, it's not energy tight in any way. And it does not have either an office space or a modern, you know, kind of training space or a place for a break room where, you know, our employees eat their lunches at a desk that's kind of like between me and Ralph to the tailgate of a plow truck that's dripping salt, you know, kind of thing. It's, it's that close.
Am I correct that at, at some point in the last few years, we had some plans thrown up or?
We had what I would call like a conceptual design. Yep. And Jeremy thinks that maybe that's more building than we needed in terms of the length. But it may actually still be a great basis for what we're doing now that it appears maybe we can stay on that site. It was designed with like a pitched roof to the south to throw some solar panels on to try to offset some energy use and things like that. And if we put the doors facing the road and pitch roof facing the railroad track, that would be the correct orientation and things like that.
Okay. That is good news. So we're going to move on to item four on the agenda?
Okay. So would you like me to introduce this?
Yes.
Okay, so I had put Okay. So I had put, uh, this on and I really honestly want to tell the select board, like you're the decision makers and this is just me highlighting an opportunity or highlighting some conditions that exist right now that you can decide whether, um, it's in the town's best interest to take advantage of an opportunity or whether it's in the town's best interest to let the opportunity go by. Because it's not an opportunity that's, you know, clearly one way or the other beneficial or not. So at the end of September, um, the federal incentives to buy electric vehicles will stop. And the end of September is less than 20 days, you know, 25 days away. What I'm asking the board to let me know is would you consider waiving the purchasing policy to replace a police cruiser? Or to purchase a new police cruiser to get the fleet up to four cars? So we're going to get a new car that's a gasoline car. It's supposed to be delivered this month. And at that point, you had told me, go ahead and auction off the oldest cruiser, which is the 2016. So that would give us a 2020, a 2022 and a 2023 car that's brand new. We have a chief and two officers right now. We're obviously trying to get a bigger department. This is simply a, an instance where if you deem it in the town's best interest, we would be able to look for an electric cruiser. The chief has said that the F-150 Lightning qualifies for this. And we have found out that the Mustang does not qualify for this. So, um, that's probably what we would be looking at is a pickup. We could either replace the pickup that we have now because it would be the oldest. Or we could add it in and we would have two pickups, an SUV and a sedan in the department fleet. One attractive thing, um, that I found out about the F-150 Lightning is that they can be used as a mobile generator or a mobile power supply, where the Mustang could not. So in other words, like you can bring this and plug something into it at an emergency site. So, um, you'll see in the capital plan. I did highlight one capital need, um, at the town office being, uh, either a battery backup or a generator because the town office is our emergency operations center. So, um, these are the conditions that are available. So I think, um, in the FY26, which is the current year and the FY26 budget, it is impossible as a matter of arithmetic for the department to fully expend the officer salary line again. Like we're already something around $40,000 to the good on the officer's salary line because of short staffing. So in FY25, that was the opportunity that you saw as a board to replace a cruiser from current funding, um, and not raid the 1% fund or not look for, um, a loan. You know, essentially we used it from current police funding. It would basically be saying, again, from current police funding. And if you think it's not a good idea to waive the policy, I still would like you to keep an open mind about the possibility of still using that funding and, and following the policy, going through procurement after September 30th sometime or whatever, and getting the three bids like we, like we would do through the policy. And consider whether you want to use the money that's kind of capacity in the police budget for the current year to buy a new car, either as a replacement or as a fourth car to make the fleet be, um, at that size going forward. So it's a discussion.
So to get the credit, would we have to take delivery?
We have to take delivery by September 30th.
How much is the credit?
7,500. So, right, right. Essentially, the question is, is, is a $7,500 credit probably more benefit to the town than going through the traditional bid process? Where we hope to save the town as much money as we can by getting a sealed bid and going with the lowest bid usually. There is a green fleet policy consideration, which was, you know, basically, um, to this point, we have not had support in the police department to, um, purchase an electric vehicle. But this F-150, since they already have an F-150 and the dimensions are the same, they know that it is comfortable enough and safe enough for them with what they're wearing and the gear that gets mounted in the dashboard and so forth.
And are there state of Vermont credits available as well or just the?
That I don't know right.
There, when I, I own an F-150 Lightning. When I bought one, which was last November, I want to say it was $1,400 from the state of Vermont. That, don't quote me on that, but it's something in that neighborhood. At least it was at the time.
So in theories.
Can you run down for me one more time, just because I'm a little slow? What we have for vehicles now?
We have a 2016 Explorer, which you had already kind of directed me to, to auction after receiving the new car. These are all internal combustion.
So that's going out, yeah?
2016 Explorer, we will be auctioning soon. We have a 2020 F-150 truck. A 2022 Ford Explorer SUV. And the new car that we should be getting delivered, they said in September, but let's say next month, um, is a 2023 Dodge Charger.
So we have three right now. We'll still have three when we get the new one and get rid of the old. So this would be a fourth.
A fourth or replace the F-150, which would be the oldest in the fleet.
And the general policy has been to have one for each officer.
Kind of got away from that. And I, um, there, there was a time when the officers took the cars home. We're, we're not in that time anymore. I, I don't think we have a policy about how many cars versus how many officers. It's kind of what you think is prudent.
Oh, it's, it's certainly, um, appealing to use the money that we have in this year's budget that we're not spending on salary. If we're, we're already 40,000 to the good and that's just from July, August and.
From, from five pay periods.
Five pay periods. And we know that's going to continue because there's no way.
Unless we get a level three certified officer from another department.
Right.
Everybody else is going to have to go to the academy.
And even if we got one, one of those, we're still under what we had, um, put in the plan, we would, we would still. Um, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure we need four cars. I mean, I guess, I think I would be more inclined with it if we also got the $7,500 credit and we traded in the 150.
It's fine.
Replaced.
In, in it, in its place. And then we've got three newer vehicles that are all in good shape going forward. And we've, at the best case scenario, right this moment, we have three officers.
Yes. And that's a perfectly good possibility to go forward. Like this is a definitely like above my pay grade situation for a reason, right? I couldn't spend this on my own. There's options you have.
Do we know, is there a, uh, one of these electric F-150s available anywhere that we could have delivery on before?
I believe so. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, you did.
Yeah.
Well, that's, I mean, if, if it would help the police officers to test drive one that we don't have to go out of our way for it, they're more than welcome to take mine for a spin.
Is the F-50, F-150 either gas or electric, a certified police vehicle?
Is it pursuit certified as they were talking about?
Chief talking about, about how they're not certified and.
I can, I can say that the F-150 Lightning is the fastest F-150 ever made by some distance.
No, I mean, sir.
Yeah, I don't know what the official certification is.
Right, right. The safety issues he was talking.
I would have to check with the chief about that. Yeah, he, he did say he was comfortable with it, which to me, you know, he, he told me like, I don't want to think about this car and I won't bother with you what it is. But there was a certain car he didn't want to consider. That was police pursuit certified, um, and this one he felt comfortable with. So I kind of assumed it was certified, but I didn't actually ask him. We can check.
There is a F-150 Lightning Pro Special Service vehicle.
I just, Jeff and I just found the same website. It's all tricked out.
So, um, essentially, I think tonight's question is, would you even consider waiving the purchasing policy? If the answer to that is no, that's okay. And we just stop, you know, running around looking for an electric car. If you would consider waiving the purchasing policy, we're going to run around looking for an electric car, probably an F-150, and see if we can source one and bring it back to you at the next meeting.
And we wouldn't have to get it tricked out yet. We just need to take, we just need to get the vehicle.
Yeah.
And then we, and then we would have to.
So what he thought we would do is if we bought it locally or whatever, we would be sending it to Pennsylvania to get the stuff put on it.
That's the only place to.
It's the closest place.
Closest place to trick it out.
So this is, yeah, so I'm just looking at the Ford website and it, it comes tricked out, but I would think that that may not necessarily be available right away. Um, it also doesn't have the price. It has a mega power trunk. What is that is?
Uh, the mega power refers to it has four 120 volt outlets that you can plug in.
So what is a trunk?
The trunk is where the engine would normally be and are under the hood. It is just storage because electric vehicles don't have engines.
Like an old.
It is a front truck. Oh, Trish, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's going to come up.
Trish, can you come to the microphone? I think that was when Vicki was saying she couldn't hear questions. That was the.
Tricia Welch, um, just so 40,000 plus in the budget that we have that we didn't spend and 7,500 the rebate. So my question was how much would this cost? And then what would, what's the actual price that is?
So it'll be $70,000 or something on that range. But the 40,000 is just like what we've accumulated to the good since July 1st. And that's going to kind of keep clocking up as we go through September, October.
So if this were to go through, it'd be relatively not costing anything. And if they sold the, the current F-150, that would just produce that much more to the good?
What we've, what we've been doing is putting, um, proceeds from cruisers that we've sold into the police revenue line, which does eventually like make the general fund bottom line healthier.
How many miles on the current F-150 off the top of your head? Don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
I am CPA, so you're kind of speaking to this. Jeff, did you get the full 7,500? Credit?
I did, yeah.
Okay, because it depends on where the parts are manufactured. Everyone reads this.
That's why we found.
That's why the Mustang doesn't, we want, we're looking at the Mustang first.
And I do believe it needs to be placed in service.
We think it just needs to be owned and titled.
Okay. Good, because I, you know, if you have to send it to Pennsylvania and so before it's actually in service, you might not have the time by September 30th and then that.
We, we would not have.
It is a moot point, right? So I'm just saying.
It can conceivably be placed in service without necessarily being a.
So.
Yeah, called the administrative vehicle.
Right. Yeah, just make sure, sure.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's the.
Yep, that's good.
So if, if we, um, waive the purchase policy for you, that means you can go dig in a little deeper and then come forward to us next Monday night at the regular select board meeting that we could then really have more information to, is the answer yes or no? Is that?
Yes, and you would need at that point to be ready to either say yes or no. Because that would be kind of the last opportunity you'd have in September.
The vehicle is considered placed in service when it is ready and available for its intended function. That though is the always reliable AI overview. So now I'm going to look at the actual website because the AI overview.
Yeah, that's.
Never right.
Might be worth digging, not in a meeting to find that for sure, but.
Well, I, my personal opinion is I, I would think that we could give him the authority to dig into this more until next Monday night and then we know realistically what we got. And then you could also look at.
I will do my best to try to get you three vehicles.
Yeah, but we, we, we could also do a, a little pro forma as to, um, the, the salary line, you know, that we are pretty sure we're going to only have what we have and maybe one more. And that wouldn't even be till the next academy class starts, which is pretty far down the line.
So right, so Officer Cochran can work 40 hours a week whenever the situation allows, until she goes to the academy and after she gets back. The other candidate that's kind of active in the process right now is not a certified officer of any type, so that they're not, they're not going to be on payroll at all.
Start paying his, his, uh, salary when he went to the academy.
The academy wage. Yes, yes.
And, and Officer Cochran, we could figure that he's dated tonight that she's working about 30 hours. And it's feasible that if, you know, she wanted to work more, we could, you know, I, it seemed that the, my questioning of that was if she really wants to be going full time, why aren't we letting her work full time?
It's, it's not, it's not a let, it's her personal situation.
Trial lawyer.
Yeah. I, I think if she were available, we, we would have her 40 hours here.
And so the personal situation is changing when she goes to the academy. Okay.
Yeah.
Pleasure of the board. I've filled that out, all right?
You don't even need to like vote to waive it tonight. You, I just need like kind of a sense of the board. Like, do you want me to spend some time and get you some information about electric cars? With the understanding that if you go for it, you'd be waiving the purchasing policy next week. You know what I'm saying?
I'm fine.
As am I.
I'm not really, I'm not in favor of electric cars.
It's okay. Yeah.
No.
I'm kind of on the, I'm kind of on the fence on it, you know? And whether we need the fourth car and how bad the pickup is now where we would spend that much money.
Well, that could be part of it. Could we get a slightly better picture of where the current F-150 is in terms of service?
Yep.
I, I think it's worth investigating. I just sent you, um, a website from VLCT that talks all about how to claim the tax credit.
Thank you. Yes.
Gets you that and.
Yeah.
Well, why don't, why don't you do some investigating? Get the information on the current 2020 truck?
Yep.
Yeah. You know, to find out the availability and find out if it even makes, if there's a way we actually save the 7,500. If we don't, then there's no rush and we.
There's no rush, right?
We can take all kinds of time.
Yep.
And, you know, I, I mean, I, I have the same question that Brian has. I mean, I, I, I actually would like to see us have an electric car so we could see the difference and how it works and the maintenance and things like that. But I question how many police guards we need with, you know, three, three police officers.
And, and to that, that, to that question, like it is perfectly reasonable to me that you would say, yes, let's get a newer, let's get a brand new vehicle in at this discount, so to speak, by selling the oldest vehicle or the one that doesn't fit, you know, their needs right now. Which to me, it seems like they'd probably want to keep the sedan, the SUV and a truck. And then they would have, you know, three different kinds of things for different purposes.
And if it's, you know, if it's really not advantageous to go with the electric and we still want to do something, we could still.
And do it later through the normal process.
The 2020 150 for another 150 and, you know, be ready to rock and roll from there.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, the one thing I'd be interested in is, is, you know, since board has this, suppose I could have sent you that webpage now, but I've lost it. You know, the one that they've already tricked out. Um, whether that means that the regular Lightning isn't pursuit qualified.
From, from what I could tell, there was nothing structurally different. There was accessories and additions added on, but there was nothing different in the frame or the.
Okay.
And that was a five minute Google search admittedly.
Okay. I'm just going to send you this website while I'm.
All right, why don't you go ahead and do some looking and we'll have another fun conversation Monday.
Yep.
Now that brings us up to item five, which is public comment and participation. We have a small group of public here this evening. Um, anyone want to add anything to our? If anyone wanted to add anything to our process of starting to look at the budget, I assume that the next meeting, we're gonna start getting into first draft.
The next meeting, I will bring you the budget that has the column with the proposal for FY27 for all the departments. But the next meeting is not going to be till October 6th. Right? We're gonna take the fifth Monday off.
Right.
Right? So the next select board is next Monday. Then there's an off Monday, which is the 30th, and then we'll budget Monday on October 6th. Oh, 29th, sorry. Right, 29th. It's your birthday? It's Bill Moore's birthday, September 29th.
That's why we're taking it off.
It's a federal holiday.
I heard, I heard a rumor that it's a round number.
Ooh. Big five oh number?
I knew it.
Okay, um, public comment? Uh, item six?
I don't have an agenda, finally, but I would assume that's a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Half an hour early.
Bingo.
Bingo.
Okay. Thank you.
We need to vote on that. Pardon? We need to vote on the motion to adjourn.
Oh, all in favor of adjourning? I'm sorry.